Good evening. Welcome to your City Commission meeting. Please turn off all cell phones as we are being recorded tonight. And we will begin the meeting with the call to order with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First item on the agenda, consideration of the previous meeting minutes from August 8. You have any questions or concerns about the previous minutes, Commissioners?
No.
If not, is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, move that we approve the minutes from the August 8, 2017, regular meeting as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 Motion passed. Next item on the agenda, we see we have some visitors tonight. Next business, item of business is citizen participation. Would anyone care to address the commission this evening? Yes, sir. Please state your name and your address.
Mike Hooper, 1054 10th Avenue. Previously brought to you attention to the City Commission, several humps of property along southern side of Shawnee, between 10th and 8th, east of the fire station. Needed vegetation to dealt with more than 60 days ago. Code enforcement hasn't done this, hadn't had this addressed as of yet. It should be noted, and I would hope the commission would make appropriate adjustments to code enforcement budget by reducing the amount of funds available to code enforcement because of their lack of action.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Anyone else here to speak? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Tracy Ludeman. My address is 316 South Fitz Street. I am coming today about the killing of my nephew, Antonio Garcia Jr. He was killed July 11, 2017, which is six weeks ago today. As of yet, we have had nothing from the police department. I would ask that we have transparency, accountability, justice. We have as yet, nothing. No answers, no nothing. He was killed in front of his wife. I've heard he was killed in front of his children. I would like to know what the policy and procedures are as far as use of excessive forces when dealing with the public. I would like to know why there was only one officer there. I would like to know, I would like to see the body cam or dash cam footage, if there is any. I've heard numerous rumors. What I'd like are facts, you know? He was my nephew. I don't think that it's fair or justified that it has been this long and we, his family, don't know anything except rumors and horrible, horrible stories going around my nephew. He was a man. He was a grandfather. He was a father. He was a husband. He was a brother. He was loved. And we don't know anything. If this had been your family member, I'm sure that you would want to know, you know? If this had been anyone's family member, I'm sure that you would want to know, you know? But we've been demonstrating peacefully, you know? We have been asking questions peacefully, but we're not getting any answers. And I just think that this is absolutely unacceptable and absolutely criminal, really. It's criminal not to know what has been going on with our family member. You know, we can't even, we can't even really mourn him because we don't know what happened to him. We don't know why this man is gone, you know? And I would ask that you bring to bear of your considerable, I don't even know the word, you know? Your authority to bear on the people who have the wherewithal to give us answers, you know? Because today, at 8:15, makes exactly six weeks that we lost our loved one. And that is just too long for us to not have answers. That is just too long. Thank you for your time.
First of all, I'd like to give you my condolences. I'm so sorry for your family, for your loss. We don't know any more than you do right now. Immediately following the event, the city turned over this case to the Kansas Bureau of Investigation. And they have been working with this for, they've had complete control of the investigation. And it's, we don't know when they'll be finished. They're not finished yet. When the investigation is complete, the Kansas Bureau of Investigation will present the findings to the county prosecutor's office, and it will be taken from there. The city, the police department has been cooperative with requests made by the Kansas Bureau of Investigation, and they're waiting the delivery of the final report. I don't know any more than you, and I feel your pain because I just can't imagine waiting so long to find out. But that's the way, what we have to deal with. So, again, I apologize for your loss. I'm sorry for your loss, ma'am.
Thank you. I just, I just feel what, you know, it's been so long, you know? In Wisconsin, that lady that got killed, it took her three days. And, you know, I don't know, you know, I'd heard that the KBI had gone elsewhere and were investigating other cases. And it just feels as if the police department is waiting for us to forget about it so that they can sweep it under the carpet.
Our police department has nothing to do with it at this point. We're still waiting for the KBI.
When you say that, I can, I can almost understand it. However, you know, if you put yourself in our shoes.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, it's, it's not quite that trite to us.
It isn't trite at all.
You know, it just feels that way. And that's the only word that I can think of at the moment because it just, you know, Papa is what we called him. And, you know, he, he had his trouble at times when he was younger. But, you know, he has not, he had not gotten into any trouble since 2003. He had turned his life around. He was focused on his children and his grandchildren, and he didn't deserve to die that way. And we would really like answers, you know? We would really like to know, you know, who made the phone call? Who decided that there should only be one officer there? Who decided, you know, what is the policy for excessive use of force? You know, how is the training determined that these, these people go out there for just one person? And who decides that they should pull a trigger, you know? How is that decided? You know, I would really like to know because too many people are dying these days.
That's true. Thank you, ma'am, so much. Thank you for coming. Anyone else care to speak this evening? Thank you, visitors, for coming. Really appreciate you coming tonight. Next item on the agenda, general items, mayor's appointments to the Community Advisory Board, Community Corrections Board, and Convention and Visitors Bureau. And the Leavenworth Preservation Commission, I move to recommend the following appointments to reappoint Charles Davis, Sister Paula Rose Yarnick, Stephen Kempf, and Mike Souffert to terms ending January 31, 2020. I forgot, do we vote on each one or do we go through?
You can do the whole thing and vote on it.
Thank you. To the Community Corrections Advisory Board, reappoint Marcia Jackson and Pat Kitchens to terms ending 10/16/2019. Appoint Ron Booth to a term ending October 16, 2019. As for the Convention and Tourism Committee, appoint Mary Stevenson to an unexpired term ending January 31, 2018. And to the Leavenworth Preservation Commission, appoint Diane Sodders to an unexpired term ending April 15, 2020.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Ray.
Aye.
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 Motion passed. Next item on the agenda is the 2017 Edward Byrne Grant.
Chief Kitchens will handle this item.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, the police department is before the governing body this evening, asking for your authority to apply for the 2017 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $25,535. On August 3 of this year, the Justice Department released its annual allocation. Edward Byrne Grant is allocations that the federal government mixed a local law enforcement agency so that we might use the funds to offset the cost of equipment in the law enforcement profession. This year, the city of Leavenworth is eligible for $25,535. The requirement for this particular grant is that we share some portion of it with Leavenworth County. Sheriff Dedeky and I have applied the normal formula of a 60-40 split. The Leavenworth Police Department would be allocated $15,000, and the Leavenworth County Sheriff's Department would be allocated $10,535. Both agencies will use that to acquire equipment to support our mission. There's some correspondence attached to the policy report in which Sheriff Dedeky has seen the agreement and agreed to the terms. There would be no city funds necessary to support this grant allocation. The commission actually need to authorize the police department to apply for the grant in the amount of $25,535,000. $10,535,000 would be given to the Leavenworth County Sheriff's Office, and the action would require additionally to the grant application, both the city manager and the city attorney to sign an inter-local agreement with Leavenworth County. And I'll answer whatever questions that you might have relative to the grant application.
Okay. Any questions?
Chief, if you do receive the grant, when do you expect to receive it?
The grant allocations usually come after the federal budget process, which I think is October. And so we would, in the fall, is usually when we receive it at some point, we allocate the money through city funds and then it gets reimbursed.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Oh, good. Madam Mayor, I move that we allow the city to apply for the 2017 Edward Byrne Grant and also to allow the city manager and the city attorney to sign the inter-local agreement with Leavenworth County.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 Motion passed. Thank you, sir. Resolutions, Resolution B 2175, to set a public hearing for unsafe or dangerous structures.
Julie Hurley will handle this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you said, this is a resolution to set a public hearing for unsafe or dangerous structures. On July 25 of this year, the commission reviewed a list of 10 structures that staff has reviewed in accordance with Kansas Statute 17-4759 that have been found to be in an unsafe or dangerous situation. This resolution is just setting the public hearing to consider those structures. The public hearing would be set for October 10, 2017. All of the property owners of these 10 structures have been notified that their particular structures are on this list for potential demolition. We have had correspondence from a few of the property owners. Two have indicated a desire to demolish them on their own. Two have indicated a desire to rehabilitate them. And then one was just an owner's attorney asking that they be copied on any correspondence. The properties where the owners have indicated that they want to demolish them on their own, we go ahead and leave those on this list. And we've told those property owners what the date of the public hearing would be and just asked that they try and have that done by that time. So, tonight, we're just setting the date of the public hearing. If you have any questions about any of the specific properties, I can answer those. But at that public hearing on October 10 is when we'll really go over these in depth and move forward with them.
Right. Any questions?
Ms. Hurley, I think I heard you say that two property owners have shown an interest in rehabilitating the property.
Yes.
I only see one on this.
Yep, and we actually got contact from one after I'd put the, this policy report together. It's number 10 on the list, 2608 South Fourth Street, was the second property owner that indicated their intent to repair the property.
Okay, and we're setting the public hearing for October 17, or October?
For October 10.
October 10. And we first put them, these houses on notice July 25. I hope that the two property owners that say they're going to rehabilitate have something started by October 10, you know, basically three months after the first notification. Many times, people have come in on that day, and so I just found out about a plan to do it. And it sometimes does not happen. They have had plenty of notice. I hope that these two property owners, I want them to rehab the properties, and I hope that they make those moves, start making those moves before October 10 to show their good faith.
And we've given all of the property owners a list of the items that would need to be done to bring these properties into code compliance, so they're aware of those items.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we need a motion. Any other questions before you go there? Need a motion to set the public hearing?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution B 2175, set the public hearing for unsafe or dangerous structures, to be, are meeting on October 10, 2017.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Ray.
Aye.
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 Resolution passed. Next item on the agenda, bids, contracts, and agreements. Consider bids for the 2017 sanitary sewer inflow and infiltration.
Mike Hooper, our Deputy Public Works Director, will handle this item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. The item before you tonight is to consider the approval of the low bid received from Lina Weaver Construction for the construction of the 2016-2017 sanitary sewer rehab and rehabilitation project. Back on June 27 of this year, the staff asked the commission to reject the bids from the prior bid opening of that due to complications with one of the bidders, and then all the other bidders were over the engineer's estimate. After that rejection, city staff requested that GBA modify the plans and change the scope and to comply with the rebid requirements and everything for that. The bid opening, or the bid for this process includes, in the base bid, the east-west alley between Cheyenne and Pawnee Street, between Fifth Street and Broadway. As an alternate component of that, it includes a section of sewer line along Broadway, or west of Broadway, to the alley along Dakota Street. There's three flush tank removals that are also included in this project. This work is part of the overall plan to reduce inflow and infiltration in the sanitary sewer system, and it does follow the recommendations of the report that was submitted by GBA in 2012. It is consistent with discussions we've had with KDHE and the EPA regarding our sanitary sewer system maintenance. And the plan does call for continuation of this type of work in this drainage basin, as well as other basins within the city. The revised project was advertised in Leavenworth Times and on Drexel Technologies, and the bids were opened on August 9 of this year. The lowest qualified bid was received from Lina Weaver Construction in the amount of $545,455 for the base bid. Staff has included a late start date of September 29 for this project, and it will take 75 days complete. Staff is recommending that the City Commission approve the low base bid and the alternate received from Lina Weaver Construction in an amount not to exceed $675,085 for the 2016-2017 sanitary sewer rehabilitation and replacement project.
And that's just right under your bid estimate, it looks like.
Yes.
It's a big difference between the second company and Lina Weaver.
And is that alternate, is that, is that still going to include the three areas that you have listed, like the east-west along Dakota, Third Street between Ottawa and Fatawamy, and Third Street between Wasage and Miami?
Yes, it is.
All of those are still part of it?
Yes, all three of those are, are part of the alternate.
Okay, any other questions regarding this bid? If not, do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, move that we approve the bid for the 2017 sanitary sewer inflow and infiltration project, including the base bid and the alternate bid, and be awarded to Lina Weaver Construction in the amount of $675,085.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 Motion passed. Next item on the agenda, Contract 2016-36, Change Order Number Two for George Butler and Associates for the 2016-17 sewer one and two design contract. That's a long one.
This item is directly related to the project that was just approved a minute ago. These costs were incurred for the modification of the plans for the rebid on that project. Originally, on May 10 of 2016, the commission approved the contract with GBA in the amount of $34,200. We subsequently approved Change Order Number One for $17,237 due to finding that the project was going to be more complicated than it originally thought. This change order, again, is, is for the modification of the plans for the prior project that was approved for $876.36. And the staff is requesting that you approve Change Order Number Two with GBA.
Okay.
Oh, question, probably more for Mr. Kramer than Mr. Hooper. $876.36, obviously, that's something. Is, does something under a certain amount have to come to the commission? Do you or the public works have the authority?
We just changed those rules, and I have a much broader ability to change, to accept change orders. However, this is a second change order, and so it's actually added on, it's based on the first change order plus this change order in relation to the original base price. So, I completely agree with you. But, yeah.
I don't want to hold up a project for two weeks for a next meeting for $876.
No, and?
Okay. Thank you.
We don't expect any more change orders, right?
No, no.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
If not, could we have a motion, please?
Yeah, okay, I'll go, yeah.
Go ahead.
I move that we approve Change Order Number Two, the design contract with George Butler Associates for the 2016-2017 sewer project, not to exceed $876.36, for a total amount not to exceed $52,313.36.
That is a mouthful.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Ray.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. The next item, number seven, consider 27-2018 bids for salt, which was tabled from the August 8 meeting.
Mike Hooper will continue with this item.
Mayor and Commissioners, this item, Leavenworth County annually bids salt purchases out. As part of that bid process, they include the ability for the cities and the county to co-op with them on the bids. The city specifies the number of tons that they would like to include in the bid. So, Leavenworth County did put out for bid the salt purchases. The bid opening was held on August 2 of this year. The commissioners approved the bids on August 14 of this year. Attached to the policy report are the bid tabs, as well as a tabulation of the previous year's salt purchases. City staff is asking that you approve the purchase of 600 tons through the co-op purchasing agreement with the county in the amount of $50.53 a ton for 600 tons, which would be a maximum amount of $30,318 from Hutchison Salt Company.
Okay. Any questions on this?
How much do we have? How much do you have on hand right now?
We currently have roughly 1,300 tons, 1,200 to 1,300 tons. The dome holds 1,600 tons approximately.
You have 1,300 now?
We have roughly, yeah.
And you want 600?
We want 6.
And how much does it hold? 1,500?
1,600 approximately.
So, this will give you 1,900.
Yes.
Where are you going to put it?
Well, we'll put 300 in now to fill the salt dome, and then later in the year after.
Oh, you'll take a couple deliveries, not all at once.
Not all at once.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I move that we, I'm sorry, there.
Go ahead.
All right. Okay. Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the 2017, 2018 bid for salt from Hutchison Salt Company, purchase 600 tons at $50.53 per ton. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Thank you.
Mr. Hooper, before you leave, and see with Mr. Marks here, too, with the storms last night, the two guys are probably most deeply involved. Any bad reports, good reports?
Things went reasonably well. We had a couple calls for some storm water issues. There was one sewer call that was actually a storm water issue. I think Curtis said there was one tree down that, that we responded to, but for the most part, we, we survived it pretty well. We haven't had many calls today on, on issues, so.
What was our rainfall? I know we have about eight or 10 different rain stations in the area.
I think it was around the five, five and a half inch range.
We got lucky. Could have been a lot worse.
We did.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next items, first, consideration ordinances. Number eight, first consideration ordinance, rezoning 801 North Broadway from R1-6 to RMF.
Julie Hurley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you said, this is a request to rezone the property at 801 North Broadway from R16, High Density Single Family Residential, to RMF, which is Multiple Family, Multiple Family Residential District. This property is occupied with the former North Broadway School. The school has been unoccupied and vacant since May of 2010, when the school district sold the property. The applicant is proposing to modify the interior of the structure for conversion to a total of 27 one-bedroom market-rate apartments. The same applicant undertook a similar project at the Benday School several years ago that I'm sure you're familiar with. The existing surface parking to the rear of the building will be retained. There will be a total of 18 surface parking spaces, and they will be adding a total of 13 garage spaces in the rear as well. The building was constructed in 1923, and it was listed on the National Register of Historic Places in 2011. Since it is a registered historic property, the Preservation Commission did review this project at their August 2 meeting and voted 5-0 in favor of this. The Planning Commission then reviewed the rezoning request at their August 7 meeting and voted 5-0 in favor of it as well. We did have comments from several neighboring property owners concerned about some multiple-family residential units in the area. The Planning Commission, again, reviewed all of the pertinent factors and did vote to approve this. If you have any questions, I can answer those for you now.
I'm surprised at that because right across the street is the William Small Memorial Home, the old William Small Apartments.
That's whatever they're called.
And I'm anxious to see.
North of that are duplexes.
Or duplexes.
Right, all around the, all around the blocks there.
Yeah.
So, I'm really surprised at that.
Well, and even just a vacant property, it's like a magnet for trouble.
Yeah.
And, you know, and it's deteriorating, so I, and I read.
North Broadway was my grade school. So, I went all through school there, and so I'm really excited to see them do something with it.
And I think once they see, and I would, hopefully, maybe they'll go see the projects at Benday that concern, what the end product will be. I think that they'll, you know, the residents should be pleased there. It's better than a vacant deteriorating building, I know.
And I'm glad to see they're going to present a proposal.
Ms. Hurley, you said 19 garages or a?
There will be, let's see, 13 new garage spaces.
Are they garages or carports?
They are garages. They're totally enclosed, yes.
Okay. A mass garage where people come in or individual garages? A mass garage where people come in or individual garages?
There will be two garage buildings. I don't have it on the screen, I apologize. But there will be one building along the very western edge of the existing parking lot and one along the southern edge that would have multiple garage spaces in each of those buildings.
One thing I've heard that I found interesting about North Broadway School, it's a carbon copy of Benday, or Benday's a carbon copy of North Broadway, built about the same time. Probably used the same architect and made him from one set of plans, and the school district 100 years ago said, let's build two. So it's the same building. Interesting.
It is. Okay, is there, are there any other questions first? Otherwise, is there a consensus for this rezoning?
Yes.
Yes. We'll move on with that. Next item, first consideration ordinance to adopt the 2017 Uniform Public Offense Code.
Next three items will be handled by Chief Kitchens.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, the Police Department is before the governing body this evening, asking for you to place an ordinance on first consideration that adopts the 2017 Uniform Public Offense Code for Kansas Cities by the use of the City of Leavenworth. Every year, the Kansas League of Municipalities issues a standard uniform public offense code that we've used for many years, and this is the annual update to that. My review found some minor changes, no fundamental changes that would cause me any concern. There's always a few definition changes or sentencing guidelines changes throughout the book, but nothing that would cause significant issues. I would ask that you place an ordinance on first consideration that adopts the 2017 Uniform Public Offense Code for Kansas Cities for use by the City of Leavenworth Police Department.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments on this?
Any major changes here, Chief?
No, sir. All definitions or sentencing that they line up with the state statutes that have been changed.
Okay. All right. We need a consensus on that. Is there a consensus?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Next item, first consideration ordinance to adopt the 2017 standard traffic ordinance.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, same thing. The Police Department is requesting that the commission place an ordinance on first consideration that adopts the 2017 standard traffic ordinance for Kansas Cities for use by the City of Leavenworth Police Department. Very much the same thing. They create a standard traffic manual for us to use to enforce standard traffic laws. I might remind everyone, the principal change here was the raising of the seatbelt fines. If you might recall, about a month ago, we asked you to do that emergency change to come in line with that. But the new manual includes that change. So the seatbelt fine for not wearing your seatbelt is now $30. That's the only change of significance that we remind folks about, and so I would ask you to place that on first consideration.
Okay. Any questions on the standard traffic ordinance?
No.
If not, is there a consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, next item, first consideration ordinance to adopt the 2017 Traffic Control Device Master List.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, I'm asking you to place an ordinance on first consideration that adopts the 2017 Intersection Traffic Control Device Master Index. We have created a master index of all the intersections that are controlled in the City of Leavenworth, various stop signs and that sort of thing. The only change this year that we are still considering is where they are constructing the new Sonic there, we may need to install a new stop sign. As you are turning east, you're traveling south on Fourth Street, and you turn onto the frontage road heading towards that, we may put a stop sign there that controls that intersection. And so we're still waiting to do some, the Traffic Safety Committee reviewed it, and we're still evaluating that. We want to see how the traffic flows, but we are considering installing a traffic stop sign there.
So the stop sign would be east and west, not north and south?
Correct. There's already some intersection controls there. Sonic is putting some stop sign and exit controls exiting their property onto that road. We may add another one just to make sure it's safe there.
Okay. They expected to be finished with that?
He tells me September. I asked him about quite a week.
Thank you.
That's what he tells me.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions on the Traffic Control Device Master List?
No.
If not, is there a consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Another, the next item is first consideration ordinance to repeal Chapter 58 Human Relations.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, during the process of looking at some ordinances to streamline the city's recruitment and hiring process, we came across the fact that in 2012, the city commission provided a consensus to disband the Human Relations Commission, and there was never an ordinance passed to do that. So that's what this is tonight before you. We've checked high and low with the City Attorney League. There are no statutory requirements to have this. There is a best practice that some cities are doing about putting some information on their website about if you do have a fair housing complaint, please contact the HUD office and provide the number. So we're going to do that, but this would be the first consideration ordinance to repeal Chapter 58.
Okay. Any questions in regard to this, Chapter 58?
No.
If not, is there a consensus to move forward with this?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next item on the agenda, first consensus ordinance amend Chapter 42 Emergency Services Alarm Systems.
City Clerk will handle this item.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, at the August 1st study session, staff reviewed this section with the commission, and there were a couple of items that we wanted to make some changes to and one that we wanted to add. The first two changes, alarm permits, the ordinance currently states that we issue an actual permit and it's to be kept on the premise, and we haven't done that in over 10 years, so wanted to take that verbiage out of it just so it doesn't confuse anybody. And then there was another sentence in that same section that was just really confusing to anybody who read it. It didn't make any sense. I think it was probably put in there back in 2009 when it was originally written, so it really wasn't relevant today if anyone was reading it. And then the third item was to add a section under violations and penalties that would allow the city to go to municipal court if anybody who violates this section. The way it's currently written, we would have to go to district court rather than municipal court. So we wanted to make that change and add that section to it.
Child security, Mr. Dawson.
So those are the three changes that would go into effect with this ordinance. I also talked to the commission about exploring a third-party option to maybe help with administering the alarm system program. I'm still researching that. That'll come back to you in another study session, but I want to go ahead and get this going so we can get those changes made.
Yeah, I like the changes. I got round and round with the citizen one time because he didn't pay his permit fees, and he gave me the ambiguous language here. I like the changes. It says fee, permit, user, pay. Very, very clear, very concise. Thank you.
Yeah. Obtained, paid.
Yeah.
Makes sense. Any other concerns or questions about this? If not, is there a consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay, consent agenda?
Mayor and Commissioners, for your consideration, I'd like to present the claims for August 5th, 2017, through August 18th, 2017, in the amount of $883,202.41. The net amount for pay number 17 effective August 18th, 2017, in the amount of $329,950.50. The fire and police pension are $11,401.34.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the claims. Please begin voting with Commissioner Rehn.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Any other items? Any other items, Mr. Kramer?
Just two informational items. As a reminder, next week is a fifth Tuesday, so there'll be no meeting next week. But we do plan to have a study session on September 5th, which is the day after the holiday, but we have about a half a dozen items we need to address that night, including asking the commission to set the two dates for the public meetings for the storm water problem. So we'll present some date options that night for that.
When I met a mayor, I know I asked Public Works and Operations Manager about the storm last night. We also had the fire chief and the police chief here. Do we have any issues in town out of the ordinary due to the storm?
No, sir. We had a bunch of calls for water in the roadway. We did a little traffic control, but other than that, it was fine.
So all of our creeks stayed within their banks?
Barely, but yes.
Second Street did not flood?
Yeah, we were lucky.
Lower Second Street, yeah, got wet.
A little bit, right.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else before the commission tonight? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Rehn.
Aye.
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 We are adjourned.